I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. It's made by Robert. It's seconded by Scott. All for that. Seth, Lynn, can I do our prayer?
Dear gracious family, Father, we just come before you tonight and ask for your wisdom on what we're doing tonight. And, Father, I just ask of you, everyone, in this winter, the weather, driving, and our girls who aren't traveling, and all the fans, we ask for protection over them. And we bring honor to you in all we do. In my prayer. Amen.
Let's do our prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. On this land, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Nobody sign up for open court. So at this time, we'll move on to our six-tier three-board training, continuing education.
All right, everyone, we've got, as you can see on the screen by Zoom, we've got Mr. Rick Lambert, part of Powell Law Group, which is our school law firm that helps represent our district. And Mr. Lambert's going to provide us with our training tonight over duties and don'ts of trying to go forward with a bond. And so, Mr. Lambert, if you will give us just about five minutes, I forgot to tell everybody before we started, we have food available here. I'm gonna allow them to make a quick plate with a sandwich, so they can even have a bite while you're sharing this.
Sounds like a good idea. Can you all hear me okay?
We can, and we're gonna try to even make it a little bit better.
Okay, sounds good. And I'm gonna see if I can share my screen while y'all are getting your food.
Okay. All right, folks, sandwiches and chips and fruit tray and drinks, so please help yourself.
I think we're good now. Let's see if I can get the right, uh, share. Okay, can everyone see the, uh, the power plate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, good. All right, let's see if it advances here. Okay, thank you very much for having me. I'm pleased to be able to talk to you about bond election and particular ethics. And I'm sorry that I couldn't be there in person, and I hope that you get a good experience of our Zoom presentation. Feel free to stop me and ask questions at any time, because I will make sure that this is covering the material that you want to hear. Just remember about myself, in addition to being a guide counsel for an elementary school district, as a partner for the Powell Law Group, I was fortunate, I guess, in matter of being unfortunate depending on your perspective, to serve as board president of Borden when Borden was in the middle of the Borden election. So I've had the opportunity to see this from the government's chair perspective as well as from the council perspective. And so, let's get into the material here. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is just some ethics rules and the laws, and then we'll do a little Q and A, make sure we covered all of the material. First of all, the Texas Election Code 255.0203 states that an officer or an employee of a fourth or seventh degree in which is a school district may not stand or authorize the spending of public funds for political advertising. And so, the definition of political advertising is what is the key here, and we'll be talking about that in just a second. Now, critically, this provision was not applied to a communication that factually describes the purpose of the measure, in this case, the bond program, and the bond propositions on the ballot. If the communication does not advocate passage through the feet of the measure, so that's our critical issue right there. And then, just to let you know, a person who violates the section actually commits a class A misdemeanor offense. So in addition to your civil responsibility, it can also be criminal responsibility, but if you do it the right way, there's no reason to worry about that concern. All right, so let's talk about political advertising. Again, if the political advertising, if you're advocating for a particular outcome in an election, okay? And if this, by the way, it applies to any election in which the school district applies, is part of, so it would apply to a bond election, it would also apply to your trustee elections. But a communication that advocates for against the outcome is a violation, and it doesn't matter whether it's in writing or written. It could be in a newspaper, it could be on social media, it could be on a website, it could be broadcast on radio. All of those things are considered a communication. Most employees and officers and trustees are considered officers, violate the ethics laws by intention in a communication that, for example, says vote for X or defeat Y. So if you're saying vote for the bond election, that is considered advocacy. But in addition to that, you can also run afoul of the law depending on the way and the tone of emphasis on a statement that you make, and I'm gonna keep you on the table here. So the first one is purely factual. It says, "School X is designed for 500 students today, and one year later, it's 700, and two years later, it's been led by another, 100 students." That and stuff like that is just a factual statement. But you see that if you were stating this, and you started making an emphasis about, well, where's 500, and that's 700, and your number got led by another, 900, you know, you get the difference there? That kind of tone and emphasis can cross over into advocacy. And again, it's a factual basis there, but I just want to make you aware of the fact that tone and emphasis can also be an issue despite the words that you use. So this is an example here. The caterer I see got into a little bit of trouble in the past when a press release was issued and the school board president said, "This bond is the right thing to do for children of the community." So and so and stuff, you might think, well, you know what, that might be factually incorrect, but the finding in the complaint was that, was the conclusion that the circular was stating that it was the best solution, and that the district school district had to do that exactly, or there wasn't a real alternative. And so, the issue was that they thought that that was misleading to the public. But the process, just so you're aware of it, is somebody ready to complain, any individual can file a complaint with the Ethics Commission, file a school complaint using the required form to start the process. There's preliminary review and hearings that would be conducted, and then, at the end of the day, this commission is authorized on the civil enforcement actions, issue orders and claim several penalties, and then refer matters to criminal prosecution. The district attorney would have to, the county attorney would have to be there to draw any criminal enforcement action. Okay, so examples of violations or finding the violations in the past, the best of it, fantastic, state-of-the-art, countless benefits are, buildings are in horrible shape, we must do something. Those kinds of things that suggest that these are the only alternatives, or these are horrible conditions, that type of thing, are when you can get into difficulty. And then, these are just some other examples of violations, or potential violations, or words that you want to stay away from. Now, we talked about what you shouldn't do, kind of in a vacuum. And part of what we would do is, as a counsel, along with the others working with you on the bond program, we would work actual information, we would work the superficial to make sure that you're compliant. These permissible things that a district should be doing, and you, even as board members, should be communicating, are they every day, and there's no problem with it, are things that are explanatory materials that say exactly the process you've gone through in order to determine what your leads are, and the process that you've gone through to come to the conclusion of the measure that you voted for and are putting forth to the public in this election, the project costs as proposed, as well as the projects themselves, information with regard to when people can vote and where, and that type of thing, growth rates, but without overemphasis, but just kind of legitimate factual information, your performance data with the board and the district as it relates to student performance, your capacity issues, the age and condition of the buildings, as long as you're not being a little superlative in terms of what you're saying, and then the obvious tax impact of your bond program. This is examples of good stuff that's allowed. A district is holding a bond election to address growth, safety, and aging facilities. Again, aging is okay, as long as you're not being superlative in what you're saying. And so, I'm sure that your bond program is just like everybody else, and you're addressing all of these concerns. You know, if you're constructing a new elementary to address capacity issues and accommodate future growth, that's kind of the measure you're gonna put out. You wanna say that your improvements are gonna apply to all existing facilities, for example, if that's what you're doing. You're addressing security and disability, accessibility upgrades. Though you may not use school district resources for political advertising, it preys and officers are free to campaign for against proposition on their own time or their own resources. And so, that applies to all employees of the district and all trustees of the district. The only person that really consistently has been found not to be able to take that employee hat off was your superintendent. So Dr. McCullough should really be careful any time speaking, because people see Dr. McCullough as superintendent all the time, and he can't really take that hat off. But as a trustee, if you're talking to friends, if you're at the Lions Club meeting, if you're in another community group, you're there by yourself, for example, and not in a forum, and somebody said, well, you know, tell me about this bond program. For example, whenever I was trustee, what I would say is, well, you know, I'm a tax payer in the district, and I've got four kids in the district, and absolutely, I voted for putting that passage forward. I believe in that program, and I personally, not speaking as a trustee for the district, but speaking as a reclaimer of individuals, I believe in it, and I plan to vote on it, and I hope you'll do the same. There's nothing wrong with doing that. Again, as long as I'm not doing it at a district event, as long as I'm not doing it over district resources, or utilizing a district device, for example, and no one can be confused about me speaking in my personal capacity as opposed to on behalf of the school board that I do that all day long. Okay, so let's talk about some duties and don'ts here. Can a board authorize the spending of district bonds to create a virtue urging support of the bond? The answer to that is no. If you stopped at to create a factual brochure, that would be fine, okay? But it's urging support of the bond. Can a board member urge citizens to support a run rate meeting using his own time and resources, like just said before, you can? Can the board authorize the district use of a district copy machine to copy a OBS flyer that's used by district resources? So the answer is no. Can a board member write a letter to the editor, again, on her own time and resources, supporting the bond? Absolutely not. Can a board authorize the use of the school district credit card paid for yard signs to promote the bond? No. If it were signs that just said, you know, there's a proposition, and here are voting times, please vote, you know, that would be a little bit different. But again, to promote the passage of the bond, the answer would be no. And here's another one. Can a board member personally contribute funds to a PAC, the OBS group, advocating for the passage of the bond? Absolutely. As a board member, you can be a member of a PAC, you can go to PAC meetings. Again, I will not take a leadership role as part of that, but showing a chart up and contributing money personally, and showing your personal interest and investment, yes. But again, remember, if you're going, it doesn't matter whether it's a community event or a PAC event or whatever, remember trustees, if you are there and you've got more than three members, then you're running, you're probably running afoul of the Open Meetings Act if you've got more than three. So, you know, be careful and kind of be deliberate about who's going where, and if for some reason somebody doesn't get the message, and all of a sudden, you see that three are there, and all of a sudden, we got a fourth that shows up, somebody needs to, you know, needs to say, well, you know, I'll catch the next one. So again, be aware of your Open Meetings Act issues for attending any meeting related to the discussion of district business. And that really is the mention. Now, what did I not cover, and what question is gonna answer?
Anybody have specific questions?
I'm sure we can put out yard signs.
So the question is, as board members, when the PAC prints their vote for kids, or vote for the bond, their yard signs, as a board member, they can put one of those signs in their yard, correct? At their own house?
Absolutely.
And we can be up until the holiday or whatever.
Okay. And so, and they can be active?
Again, that's your own person at residence, and as long as, you know, with any district resources utilized in paying for that sign, or getting you that sign, or putting that sign in the yard, as long as you're getting it, you're putting it in the yard, then that's all good.
So even in regard to social media, so a board member or even a school employee, they can advocate for the bond on their own social media if it's during their own time and not at school, correct?
That is true, but I'd want you to think about a couple of things whenever you're doing that. Number one, it would be good, anytime a board member puts something in writing, that it be vetted through the administration, and even let us have a look at it, just to make sure that it's, you know, that it's accurate, even if it is on your own time. You want it to be accurate, you want it to be consistent with the district's message related to passing the bond, because again, the way in which you communicate these things can make a difference as to whether to pass or fail. And so, it's not even necessarily an issue of an ethics violation as much as it may be an issue of, it might not be the right messaging that has been very deliberately put together by the district. So I would suggest a vetting and a discussion before doing that, but it is fine, the one other thing that you should keep in mind is take a look at what your profile says on Twitter, on Facebook, on, you know, Instagram, whatever it is, Snapchat, TikTok, whatever it is you're using. Because if you say in your profile that you are trustee of Mount Colm Independent School District, someone could come back and say that any message there was a message made on behalf of the district. So make sure that it's clear from your profile indications that you're not, that there's no confusion that you're speaking on behalf of yourself and not as a district representative. So be careful about that. And I would suggest that anytime you're putting something out, that you just make it clear in that message, hey, this is, I'm speaking as a parent, or, you know, whatever, and I believe in that, as opposed to there being any confusion about what capacity your student is.
Okay. School administrators, can they advocate at a, say, a baseball, softball game while they're there as on administrative capacity?
So I think really, you're starting to get into potentially problematic deals if an employee speaks and advocates at a district event.
Okay.
So I would recommend a no on that. Now, however, I do recommend that at bar games, that utilize pair of timeouts, utilize your video board if it were applicable, and say, we've got a bond election coming up, voting days or X days, and here's where you vote, and all of that kind of stuff. Anything that talks about that there is a bond election, and here's when you can vote, and please vote, those are things you need to do. And remember, you know, your principals have a responsibility by law to register, you know, 18-year-old voters. So, you know, the things that are encouraging your schools to be a part of the voting process are always a good thing to do.
Any other questions?
Back to the social media, if a person advocates one way or the other on the bond election, and that comment is shared to a district Facebook page, for example?
Good question.
What issues is involved with that?
That is a good question. So again, if it's your personal page, and your page is not, you know, identifying you as a district representative, you should be fine in that, in that it could only be considered a share on behalf of you personally. But what I would suggest is be deliberate, and you should do this anyway, on anything that, you know, that might reflect on you as a public official, but always be aware of the things that are being, you know, that you're liking, or that you're sharing, or that gets somehow into a stream on your page or your application, just to be careful on what it is. And then, if it's something that you don't want to be seeing, it's within your stream, then I believe it.
So maybe even part of what his question was, was, so say on our district Facebook page, or even, well, let's just say our district Facebook page, that we're just presenting the facts of the bond, you know, we're calling for two propositions, whatever, here's what it's gonna do, it's just the facts. And so, there are people who begin, maybe not even employees, but advocacy one way or another begins in the comment section of that Facebook page. Is there an issue with any of that?
We just need to turn off the comments.
Again, if, or to clarify, if it is a district communication that is simply providing factual information, and then gets shared across the community by somebody, by somebody in the saying, vote yes, and vote in favor, and here's information, there's nothing wrong with that. Now, the person sharing it, if you're an employer or officer, you gotta, again, be careful that you're sharing it and speaking in your personal capacity.
Okay.
But no, the fact that a district communication did share across the community, and there's a, there starts to be an OBS firewall, that's fine, and you can expect that that will happen.
They're referring to time.
They'll try to do the other way too. Send the same note too, so.
So you have to be real careful with that.
Okay. Okay.
Because it looks like we are trying to control the mandate, and your schools have lost because of that, that have been taken into litigation over that.
I'd say, so the question kind of has been asked out here in the group, is on that Facebook page, even if from the district Facebook page, where we're sharing the information, can we or should we turn the comment section off so that there aren't comments made?
Four are against.
Yeah, four are against. Four are against.
Yeah, I mean, that is certainly one way of preventing there being an improper sharing there.
Okay.
I wonder if you couldn't cite the law, you know, per code, whatever, comments have been turned off.
As a disclaimer of one you don't ever comment on?
Yes, yes.
I don't know.
And then you could still make it what people could share it.
Yeah.
On their own, but.
Yeah. Okay.
But we wouldn't, the district wouldn't be liable for any comments made by someone in the community.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that wouldn't be.
No.
I mean, if you're, if you're, this district page is typically open for comments, I mean, is it done? Or do you keep it, keep it at period?
Yes. No, it normally is open for comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think there's anything in this instance that would be a deliberate effort on behalf of the district to try to supplement the, 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 I mean... So.
Okay.
I think, you know, again, I would have someone looking at the comments. And depending, and you obviously should be doing this anyway. You know, if a communication chain kind of gets out of hand, then you ought to have, you ought to have rules to refer to the type of comments and the type of language and that type of thing that anybody is usually going to comment within the district's training anyway.
Okay, okay, all right.
And we can talk about that in some more specifics, you know, at any time.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, all right, folks, anybody else?
I, maybe it's a question. Typically, if it's like a big event, like the kids will ride stuff on their cars, like, you know, like homecoming or problems. What they do on this one, we stop that as long as they don't ride on like teacher vehicle, picture teachers home. How does that?
I think you have to be careful because they're on district property.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, if it's their own vehicles, the students can't own their own vehicles.
Right, but as long as whoever's going or admin don't, then it's probably good. Or if they just put, go, go, sway one way or the other. I just know that was like pretty big a couple of years ago where like every big thing it was like, we're doing a, we're going to ride everyone's car this.
I would say ride only in their own cars. So we won't complain that somebody ruined their car.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Anything else from Mr. Lambert? No? Mr. Lambert, thank you. We appreciate your time this evening and joining us through Zoom. And I'm sure as we go through this process, we'll probably have a few more questions that I'll be calling you, asking you and getting some advice on.
Well, I'm sure that's probably true and I'm here at any time. And if board members also have questions, happy to talk about it anytime, even if it relates to, you know, a personal presentation, if there's any questions related to that.
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. We appreciate it and have a good evening. All right.
Is he closing down? Are you close?
Yeah, hang on, just leave the Zoom on just a second until, just for a few more minutes. Just in case somebody else is on, which they're probably not.
Hey, Dr. McCullough, this is Christian. I'm here just in case as well.
Perfect, okay. All right, and I might be with you here in just a minute as well.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
So at this time, the board will convene into closed session. Pursuit Texas government code 551071 and 074 at?
601.
601 PM.
Okay. All right, y'all are, feel free, thank you. Thank you for being here. Be careful for those of you who are having to drive a little farther home. Say you get across the street to the Methodist Church or whatever, the Methodist Church.
Wow, thanks.
To that neighborhood, to that neighborhood.
Exactly, thanks Brad. I totally, I almost got impaled by an obstacle this morning, if that helps. It was tumultuous driving across the street.
It's tumultuous, it's across the road.
Exactly. Tumultuous.
7:09, board convenes back into open session. If there's no further business, meeting is adjourned. 7:09.